The next three speakers, Peg Vogel, Lou Vogel, Lynn Bersik.
Thanks very much. My husband and I are town of Hector residents. We live on the western slope of Hector near Valois, on a haven that we have sought and worked for for our 30 years together. He's a mechanical engineer for a small sustainable energy firm, and we try like heck to keep our footprint as small as we can. Thanks for accepting my comments. I respect the severity of the decisions that you make. I am a biology teacher and an earth science teacher, and so I've been studying environmental issues for over 30 years. Sorry. So, some of the changes that I've noticed and observed have been rapid, some have been slow, some have been responsible, but many have been highly irresponsible and devastating. And of the issues that I have seen and studied over the many years, most important is water. And I do teach my students that water is life, and you all know how important it is to our bodies, but it includes not only our bodies, but all of life. Our fields, our forests, the wildlife, our livestock, our chickens and our cows and our pigs, our grapes, our gardens, water is everywhere, and it's all connected. Do you know how rare fresh clean water is? Did you know that 97% of the water on earth is saltwater, and of the remaining 3%, 2/3 of it is locked up in glaciers and ice or is too deep to reach? And that only leaves 1% fresh, clean, attainable water on earth. Do you really want to poison that? I've got a lot of comments here, but I want to just say that other parts of our country experience drought, their fields are dry, and their livestock are dying, and we could put our clean water to good use. And there are people in this world who would kill for our water, and make no mistake, there are people who are killing over water in the world. Air quality, transportation, we all know and have heard those comments. Let me just say that you cannot regulate this kind of all-encompassing pollution: noise, light, traffic, air, water contamination. We were drawn to Seneca Lake, we live in Hector, we follow a long-term plan to caretake our spot on earth, to garden it, to nurture it, and to preserve it. And we're trying to improve the property value in the health of this area. We chose Hector. We have clean, fresh air here, it's priceless. Please let my children and my students that we care about their health and their well-being and their future.
Hello, my name is Lou Vogel. I live in Valois, or Valois Heights, as I like to say. Help run an engineering and energy management company in Ithaca called Tatum Engineering. Tatum stands for Technology as if the Earth mattered, which comes from an E.F. Schumacher book, Small is Beautiful, or Economics as if People Mattered. And what I learned from that, like 35 years ago, is manufacturers don't pay the true cost of their raw materials. They don't pay the societal cost of despoiling the air and the water. We can't trust the industries to pay for that. They'll say, "Sorry," you know, but they won't really make up for it, for losing our water, or the use of our water. A good friend of mine from, like, for 25 years, Martha Campbell and her mom ended up in the hospital as a result of a fracking fluid spill above their land. They only found out about it after the spill, after they demanded to get the records. The company did not let them know. And this happened in Lawrenceville, Pennsylvania, like 40 miles away. It's very real, it does happen. It really hits home when it's somebody that you're very familiar with. So, I guess, thank you, I forgot to thank you, for taking the time here today. And I guess, I'm a kind and gentle man, but I will protect this water. I saw that on a t-shirt over there, and I really, it struck home to me. It is very important to us, and I hope that you will take action, so that we don't have to take action that we don't want to do.
Hi, Lynn Bersik. My husband and I have 84 acres overlooking Bauer Road. We moved here eight years ago to build our dream house, and I'm adorably sad to find our dream compromised at this point. We're really frightened, to the point that we have both spent hundreds of hours in the last three years going to meetings, researching online, talking with friends and neighbors, serving on the Skylar Energy Task Force, trying to get a policy in place. I would like to commend the board on the strong stance it took on its response to the DEC, but I now urge you with the strongest conviction possible to institute a ban on hydro fracking in Hector, based on a town's right to exercise police power, or at the very least, a moratorium to buy us time. We have this very narrow window of opportunity to act for these positions to later hold legal validity. If we succumb to the gas industry's strategy of intimidation, divide and conquer, this is just a wrong and misinformed cowardly act that will leave us powerless later. I don't want to be protected from a lawsuit, merely potential lawsuit, nearly as much as I want to be protected from the devastating and irreversible effects of hydro fracking. These are not under contest, we've been to too many meetings, not to know. I think what I'm going to do is just read a couple of brief excerpts from the lengthy comments I sent to the DEC myself. The first one was, "Every time I go to a town meeting in our town of Hector, I am filled with the irony of the poster on the hall bulletin board reminding citizens that it is unlawful to burn our trash, because it will release dangerous toxins into the air." Yet, "The gas and oil industries have been wrongly exempted from the Clean Air and Water Acts and may pollute at will with no regulation or penalty. No drilling should take place until they are once again required to obey the same laws as the rest of us. No one should be above the law. Almost every aspect of drilling and mining generates pollution, and they are wrongly exempt from regulation." Oh, 30 seconds, shoot. Extreme conflict of interest in the DEC's mission statement to both conserve and protect our resources and to exploit them. They're really turning our resources into desources. We are going to be trading water and clean air for a temporary source of fuel that may not even be used in our area, so I would urge you to ban this potential danger to our community.
Next three speakers, Doug Wheeler, Lisa Jones, John Curatola.
Good morning. My name is Doug Wheeler, and I live on Lewis Road. And I hadn't paid too much attention to what the fracking was all about until I had a chance to visit Bradford County last summer, and places along little creeks where they built pumping stations to take all the water out of the creeks. Asked the guy, I said, "Why aren't they using that anymore?" He said, "Well, there's any water there left anymore." They pumped all the water that there was out. I talked to another gentleman down there who was working on one of the rigs, and he told me that he was out of work now because he fell off the rig. And I said, "Well, they pay for that?" And he said, "No," he said that they told me to tell the hospital that I fell off my roof, because they didn't want to have to pay for the cost. I'm a bicyclist, and so I ride all over the country, and Bradford County is such that with the traffic, you can't ride a bicycle down there anymore. And I don't know if anybody's noticed this area, and it's one of the areas where people come from all over the world to ride bicycles, so it's a big part of our tourism. After visiting that area, talking to the people there, I think it'd be a very bad idea to allow fracking there.
Hi, good day. My name is Lisa Jones, and I live on Chapman Road. I have for 24 years, I own 35 acres of the northernmost waterway of the Chesapeake. I'm very protective of that waterway. When I bought the house, every day I would stand at my sink and think, "Oh, what delicious water." And I have for 24 years. Drank that water and not treated it, not filtered it. So my main concern is, we're all made of water. We all need our water. I'm surrounded by a giant dairy farm who now has Friends of New York signs. I have an anti-fracking sign. I do try to live in peace, but I also live on $6,000 a year. So I wonder what it is that we need, what, how greedy are we going to be? And I have not signed, I had the people come to my house, and I said, after the fifth man came to my house, I said, "As far as I'm concerned, come and walk and look at the view. You're going to put a gas drill in this paradise?" And the guy was like, "Hmm, well, get yourself a good lawyer, ma'am." Well, I asked him where he was from, Louisiana. "Well, I'm from Norway. The Norwegians are going to buy the oil from here, okay? It's not us, we're not going to benefit. It's going to destroy our ways of life, everyone's." So for the money, think about it, for the credit cards we use, think about it, when you spend on a credit card, what are you really doing? When you're taking a gas lease, what are you really doing? I could use that money, I could use it well. I'm a horticulturist, I'm a water bearer, I water plants for your farmer's market. So, thank you for listening.
Hi, thank you for your time. I'm John Curatola. I've been a resident of the Finger Lakes for over 20 years, and a homeowner and resident in Hector for almost 12. This is Hector water, by the way, in case anyone was wondering. When you're dealing with a corporation, I think the one thing you need to remember is that corporation basically has one goal, and that is to generate profits for the corporation. And they may make promises, and I know the gas companies have made many promises to us, they're going to provide jobs, they're not going to provide jobs for us, they're going to improve our economy, but that's not going to happen. They're going to protect our health, and they're going to protect the environment, but none of those things are really going to happen. We've seen it in Pennsylvania already, you can go look for yourself. They're going to try to make as much money as they can, and when they're done, they'll leave. As some people have pointed out, we already have an economy here, it's fairly growing, it's based on tourism, it's a beautiful place, a lot of people come here and spend money, and most of the people involved in those businesses are local residents, many of them have lived here all their lives, they've worked really hard to build up the economy. It's grown in the time I've been here without affecting things negatively, it's a lovely place to live. So I would request that you enact a ban on hydro fracking in Hector, and I think you have an obligation, not just to those of us who came here to speak, but to all the residents of Hector, and think about your own families and friends and neighbors and all of us and our children and future generations. If we don't make the right choices now, it's a critical time. If we make the wrong decisions now, we're not going to be able to turn the clock back later and say, "Oops, we made a mistake," it'll be too late. I think we need to do the right thing, so I hope you can do that.
Next three speaker, Leslie Knight, Christine, I've probably butchered some names, but this one is going to get me. Car, Anthony, you know who you are, I guess.
Here I am.
And Joseph, I can't read that.
I think it's Campbell.
No, I guess it is Campbell. Okay, I see what the problem is. Okay.
Shall I go? Thank you. I'm Christine Karatnitzky, my last name is a mouthful. I live on Route 414 in Hector. I've been here for about three years. I'm a librarian, currently out of work, and I spend my days creating and conserving the habitat on our nine acres. I can't add to the factual body of knowledge that's been presented to you to make the case against fracking, but I support that. What I'm here to say is that if you act in fear, you will create division in a community that appears to be wholly united against fracking. If you resist this potential fear of a lawsuit, if you resist this lawsuit, you have a million-dollar industry and a community behind you supporting you. This community is mobilized, this community is rallied to fight. All we need is you to fight for us. If you cannot do that, you will have all of us against you, and we will continue to fight without you. There is that t-shirt that rang a bell with me, too. "We will protect this water." And I predict that you will see residents of Hector engaging in things that they might not otherwise engage in: civil disobedience and perhaps some incivil disobedience, to protect what is precious here, and what is clean, and what is lasting. So do the right thing. This is the community speaking to you, and it's incumbent upon you to listen.
Good morning, and thank you for holding this forum. My name is Leslie Knight, and I live near Searsburg Road. I was going to try and prepare something convincing and eloquent, but my dog was killed by a car on Tuesday, and so now I'm just going to have to wing it. Some things in life cannot be replaced or undone. Having a precious dog killed by a car can never be undone. Having our precious groundwater polluted can never be undone. Having our precious pastoral community turned into an industrial site can never be undone. I am trained as a lawyer, and I teach legal analysis to foreign law students at Cornell University. I'm not licensed to practice here in New York, and I am certainly not an expert in the law regarding the regulation of fracking. I realize that the board is afraid of potential lawsuits, and my understanding is that this fear comes from information that has been given by the town's board's attorney. The information given by the town board and attorney is one interpretation of the law. There is also an interpretation of the law that says that the town can in fact ban fracking based on home rule. The courts will be the one that decide which of these interpretations will be accepted. At this point, it is undecided. Other communities have already banned fracking, as you have heard, and a couple of communities are already being sued by the gas companies. These are the communities that will be the test cases. You've heard the long list of communities that have already banned fracking. Do we really think that the gas companies are going to sue all of these communities, or are they going to wait and see what happens in these test cases? The communities that are already being sued are the communities that will need to bear the financial costs of the lawsuits, not the town of Hector. On February 16th, the board will have the opportunity to hear from another lawyer, who will give you an interpretation of the law that allows a ban on fracking. This attorney will also present to you that it is more riskier of a lawsuit if the board in fact waits to enact a moratorium on fracking. I urge you to seriously listen to this interpretation of the law, and I urge you to do everything in your power to protect our precious community from harms that can never be undone.
Yes, my name is Joseph Campbell, and we're building a permanent home in the town of Hector in Verdette, and in fact, we hope to be moving in in May of this year. I just wanted to emphasize a couple of points that have already been made. This is called high-volume hydro fracking for a reason, up to seven to eight million gallons of water per frac. And if you think about it, one truck carries roughly 6,000 gallons, and if you extrapolate that out, if it's a $6 million frac, that equals 1,000 truck trips. Now that's per frac, one well. These trucks run in convoys, and can you imagine, if you can imagine, 40 to 50 of these trucks running in a convoy up the hill, up Route 79, and trying to get into that? Can you imagine the frustration? Can you imagine the frustration of the tourists that come to our region? They can place a well pad about every square mile, and I don't know the area of the town, I'm sure you do, not all of it is suitable for a well pad, but a lot of it is. And they can put six wells on a pad in New York State, according to the regulations that are being written. So imagine six wells per pad, that's 6,000 truck trips just to bring the water, hundreds of additional truck trips to bring equipment, sand, chemicals, and to take away the toxic soup that comes up out of these wells. Another point is that the people are making the argument that the environmental concerns are overblown, and the argument is 99.5% of the frac fluid is sand and water, and that may be true. One half of 1% of 6 million gallons is 30,000 gallons, 30,000 gallons of chemicals that this industry has fought hard to not have to disclose, and I wonder why that is. How much of that stays in the ground? What happens to that stuff down there? We don't know, no one knows. And in closing, if you want a sense of what this traffic will do to a beautiful pristine rural area, I urge you to watch the short documentary, Heavy Traffic, on YouTube.
Next three speakers, Richard Delaney, Chris Tate, Yvonne Taylor.
Good morning, thank you for this opportunity. I'm a resident of Hector, my family and I live and vote in Hector. I just want to talk quickly about the economics of this decision. The cost of this decision will fall to the community one way or the other, whether you take a principled stand and ban fracking, or whether you leave us by ourselves to fight alone individually against the lack of enforcement of these environmental regulations. And so I think that you need to think about that. The DEC has been decimated by cuts in the last few years, there's no indication that those cuts will be changed. There's no one out there to enforce the regulations. I'm a resident, I came from Pennsylvania, I'm a landowner in Pennsylvania, and I can attest that the lack of enforcement of environmental regulations has affected the fishing. The streams that I fished on as a young man aren't there anymore, there's no trout in the streams. The one regret I have is that I didn't sell my land there before I moved up here. I think that's what we have to look forward to. We can look forward and predict the future, what's going to happen if we don't take a stand. Will we be better off, will our water be better off if we allow this to proceed? Will our community be stronger? Will we be using less energy if we proceed with fracking? The promise of cheap gas only postpones inevitable actions. If we don't insulate our houses and use less energy, this problem won't be solved, we're just postponing.
Good morning, thanks for having this hearing, we really appreciate it. Thanks for everybody for coming out and making yourselves heard on this subject. My name is Chris Tate, I'm a biomedical engineer from the town of Hector. I also represent the Finger Lakes Clean Waters Initiative, we're the organization that presented the Seneca Lake Big Splash last summer in support of the fight against hydro fracking, and also against the proposed LPG storage over there on Seneca Lake. Just want to say unequivocally that shale gas hydro fracking cannot be done safely. There's no way to do it safely. It cannot be regulated adequately, and anyone who tells you that it can is intentionally misleading you. Hydro fracking is a failed technology with respect to the environment, and let's just debunk all of this, all of these lies by the industry, okay? Let's debunk them all. Let me bring you a blue-chip panel of neighbors who are world-renowned scientists to speak to you about hydro fracking, and exactly what goes on in the process, and why it is a completely failed technology. One of these scientists lives five minutes from here, her name's Sandra Steingraber. She wrote a book called Raising Elijah, right here. I've submitted this to the board at a board meeting in the past for your review. She's a world-renowned scientist that studies the interaction of toxins and children, okay? And the human body. She is also a recipient of the Heinz Award. The Heinz Award is probably the most prestigious environmental award on the planet, and so her work has been widely recognized. And she lives here, she's our neighbor. And all I can say is, are you going to trust your neighbors, or are you going to trust some bureaucrats in Albany, or some lying politicians in Washington? Okay, we've got people here, we're really lucky, we've got really well-educated people here that have studied this for years and years. And I'm going to read a quote from Sandra Steingraber. "Fracking is wrong. Fracking is unmitigatable. Sooner or later, steel and concrete disintegrates. Sooner or later, gas wells open portholes of contamination between drinking water aquifers and the toxic materials held in the bedrock below. Doing fracking bright simply means building time bombs with longer fuses. There are no places in New York, and no children in New York, that we are willing to sacrifice." And that's from Sandra Steingraber, PhD biologist. Also, we have another scientific advisor that lives here in the neighborhood, his name's Bob Haworth, he's a PhD. He works at Cornell. He's responsible for the headlines that said methane dirtier than coal. We can bring him in, okay? We can sit down around a table and have a frank discussion about this, and exactly why you should ban, why you should ban this in New York State. And I'm going to submit this press release, which has all of my contact information. And I'm gonna submit this press release which has all of my contact information and also contact information for a lot of other objective scientists that live right here in the neighborhood. Be really easy to get them all together and sit down and talk this over. The group I work with, the Finger Lakes Clean Waters Initiative, we produce concerts based on awareness, an awareness of clean water and awareness of the dangers of hydro fracking. And along with all the other folks that have pledged funding in order to carry this fight out, I want you, I just want you to understand that we can raise the money and will raise the money to defend Hector. And there's, you know, there's nothing more important right now in our time, in our place, than this fight. And I will thank you in advance for creating a ban, a prohibition, a moratorium, whatever you need to do to stop this. Because you know, you're gonna, you know, those gas companies, they come in here on frac and then they're gonna leave, but we're still gonna be here. And then you're gonna have to deal with us, okay? Then you're gonna have to deal with all of us. All right. And please ban hydro fracking in the town of Hector. And thanks for your time.
My name is Yvonne Taylor. I want to thank the town board members for having this hearing. My thoughts go out to Cliff Yaw and his family. My neighbors here are all pretty tough acts to follow, but I want to add my voice to theirs. Many in favor of fracking accuse those opposed of being hysterical or misinformed. I am building a home on land that has been in my family for generations in Verdette. And when I applied for a mortgage, I was required to sign a disclosure form stating that I did not have a drilling lease on my land. The document stated that having a lease on my land may prevent the bank from approving my loan. Are the lending institutions hysterical and misinformed? I think not. They don't want to be left holding the bag on a property that is rendered destroyed by fracking. To date, as others have said, over 60 communities in New York State have bans or moratoria in place which protect the health, welfare and safety of residents, land, farms, food, water and livestock. Many others are staging moratoria as we speak. The Medical Society of New York supports moratorium and the Yates County Farm Bureau, New York's largest agricultural producer, is opposed to fracking. Are all of the communities, cities, governments and countries that people have mentioned hysterical and misinformed? I think not. There is a reason for their actions. The EPA report on contaminated water in Pavilion, Wyoming states that water contains chemicals associated with fracking. 60 families in New Brunswick have wells that have gone dry after drillers have moved in. Nearly a dozen families in Dimmock, Pennsylvania have tried to live without water since it was contaminated by fracking, some spending Christmas and New Year's searching for fresh water. An independent lab in North Dakota tested the air quality near a heavily fracked site and found tetrachlorothione propane, toluene, tetrahydrofuran. My neighbor Beth could pronounce these things better, but I stumble on these things and have a difficulty pronouncing them. To me, it's just this simple. If you can't pronounce it, do you want to breathe it, ingest it, bathe in it or drink it? I realize we need energy, but at what point do you decide that this process is not worth risking our basic human right to clean air and water? That point has come and now is the time. Aristotle said, "What lies in our power to do, lies in our power not to do." Let's not frac Hector. I urge the board to ban fracking in the town. Thank you.